Hello, good evening everyone. Okay, in accordance with the visions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and extent known. The agenda of this meeting, I'm sorry, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the New Coaster on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the administrative building, Bill, Biloxi Board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Our mission statement, Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse and evolving global society. Roll call please.
Ms. Halls, Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Mr. Lata Raca, Mr. Remmy, Ms. Ricks, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Lozinski, Ms. Cook.
Please rise for the flag salute.
Good evening, everyone. So I am going to begin our student presentation. I just want to make sure we have everyone from all of our schools. Do we have our representative, student representative for Thurgood Marshall? This student here. MLK Upper, your student is here. Bradley? Yes, all accounted for, thumbs up. High school? So, Madam President, if you wouldn't mind delaying us for a little bit to make sure that everyone has arrived, okay? Thank you.
I'm sorry, kids, you're gonna suffer through our committee reports. Okay, so before I start though, I want to thank the district for doing such a great job with the graduation, the banquet, the award ceremony. We all appreciate it on behalf of the board. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, everyone. The curriculum and instruction committee met last Thursday. We had quite an agenda, so I'll do my best to cover everything. We discussed amending our agreement with AmeriCorps and submitting that agreement for school year twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three grand. We have a memorandum of understanding between Asbury Park High School and the Center for Vocational Rehabilitation to provide work readiness, career exploration, and vocational abilities to our students. We also discussed partnering with Rutgers University for school year twenty-two, twenty-three to develop application for customized training and technical assistance implementation and developing more person-centered planned facilitation, classroom implementation, and more person-centered IEP meetings and processes at no cost to the district. And I always like it when it says no cost to the district. So I think this is a new program, if I'm not mistaken, with Dr. Eric Mello, is that right? To partner with our Instructional Teachers Academy for the math department. He will focus on new jersey learning standard, trajectory, operations, withhold, and rational numbers, problem solving, and real world scenario. This program is a first for us. We're also discussing agreement between the Behavioral Health Group on behalf of Prevention First and the Asbury Park School District to implement after-school summer programs from July twenty-second to December twenty-third. The goal of this is to prevent middle school age youth from engaging in antisocial and delinquent behavior, including violent substance abuse, and which are pathways to delinquency, and that will also be offered at the upper elementary school. A new program that we're introducing is the I Ready, which is a personalized instruction for grade K through eight in both reading and mathematics. Also, a new program is on the standard is the IXL Online Personalized Instruction for Grade nine to through twelve in both language and mathematics. This is not only for students that struggling, but it is also for advanced students. Mr. Ruiz, if I missed anything, could you discuss it, please?
Ms. Ricks, you did a fine job, and of course, if any programs have any questions or any items, I'd be happy to discuss them right now.
You just jogged a question. If you can give me again when our summer program begins.
Our summer program will begin on July sixth.
July sixth, thank you.
You're welcome. Madam, Ricks, regarding the instructional academy, you did mention that one of the focuses that we've been having is building teacher capacity, and although you did discuss that with Mr. Ruiz, we do plan on offering that to staff and providing staff with, within that cohort model, compensation for coming to learn. So the funds that we will be expending in that area will be to compensate staff for coming to receive professional development, which will in turn enhance their instructional capacity to help our students come next year in the area of math. Following the mathematic cohort, we will be expanding into the areas of science as well as language arts. So this will be a continuation of providing professional development as well as cohort support for teachers in our district. So yes, it is a first, but it will not be the last, and we'll continue it into other content areas.
Thank you, Ms. Ricks. Before we move on, are all the kids here?
Can I do a roll call of all our students, are they here? High school, very good. Thurgood Marshall, very good. Bradley? MLK Upper? Okay, so good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June celebration of our students. We will be recognizing our staff at the seven o'clock hour. But this evening, as earlier mentioned by Madam President, Ms. Cook, we have a lot to recognize and celebrate this year on behalf of our students and our staff, but as we would like to wrap up this year, we're recognizing our students of the month, which has been a year-long recognition, opportunity to celebrate these students in each of our buildings. Now, this is just one of the students that were selected overall. Each building has selected multiple students of the month. However, we have identified one student that would be the student of the month to represent that building. So thus far, we have done that each board meeting. So without further ado, I would like to call up Ms. Kathy Baumgartner, who will start with the high school, and it is our proud opportunity to recognize this is her last opportunity, as she will be retiring this year. So let's give it up for Ms. Kathy Baumgartner. My check, all right, we're cooking with grease.
Did he tell you to stand on the orange table? Okay. Okay, so I would like to present for our June Student of the Month, their certificate of excellence goes to Brian Gonzalez Mendoza. Come on up, Brian. Brian, you look, you look shocked. Who do you think you're here for? It's like, who, man?
If we could have Dr. Kristy Howard Morris come and join us, because she was also instrumental in also selecting our student of the month. So if you don't know, Dr. Howard, Kristy Morris served as the acting principal at the high school for a significant amount of time, and we want to thank her for her service, and this is our opportunity to thank both of them. Mom, come on up and get this picture.
So we have a little swag bag for Brian. This is for you for being an amazing student, and it has a lot of fun stuff in there for you, for your siblings.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Perry Medina, principal from MLK Upper Elementary.
Thank you very much. It's actually a tremendous honor and pleasure to introduce this student, young Mr. Seven Lucas, come on up, buddy. So what I would like to say about Seven is he's, he is so studious. He, he is truly an honor and a gift to our school. He is genuinely respectful, asks me, really asks me how my day was going, how my weekend was, and I truly feel better after conversing with him each and every day. Thank you, Seven, and thank you, Mom.
Good job. So we have Thurgood Marshall. Thank you, Ms. R. This is gonna come stand in for Principal Dr. Jackson. I don't wanna pronounce her name. Schultz, Dr. Schultz, like, not the Schultz, so.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to stand before you to, instead of, instead of Dr. Jackson Schultz being here today, I would like to present, introduce you to this phenomenal little girl who is very sweet, she's very loving, very kind, she's so respectful, she gets along well with her peers, and she comes to school and she's ready to learn, Ms. Zenaya McFarlane.
Thank you, Ms. R. Thank you, thank you. And I did save, uh, 'cause I have to prepare myself when Ms. Jackson Byers comes up, 'cause it's almost like I need the hook from The Apollo. We'll bring up from Bradley Elementary School, Principal Senior Buyer Jackson, I mean, Jackson Byers, excuse me.
It is an honor and privilege to honor our Bradley Elementary School Student of the Month, our Bradley Elementary School Student of the Month is actually the first, Bradley's first kindergarten valedictorian. Yes, he gave the speech during the moving up ceremony. I am talking about Mr. Brandon Nichols, he's gonna be the next president. Am I right, Brandon? And as always, we have to honor the kid president's mom. Mom, please come on up, without you, we could not, Auntie, come on up, without you, we could not have had our very first kindergarten valedictorian. You got them up. Now, Brandon, we have some spirit wear. Now, we know in the September, we're gonna have uniforms, but we're gonna also have dress down days, so on those dress down days, you can wear your spirit wear, okay?
Okay, who's gonna stand right here? Everybody with Brandon, we're gonna come here and take this picture, come on, come on, come on, come on. Oh, Grandma, Grandma, come stand right there, come, come stand in the middle. Thank you, Ms. Jackson Byers, and that was by far the short, brief, and sweet. So yesterday was our high school graduation, and although some of our students are not here and they are exiting our district, I wanted to highlight a number of outstanding accomplishments of our students here in this district that were part of the class of twenty twenty-two. And so I'd be remiss if I did not talk about our ally health CTE program that seven students graduated with a patient care technician certificate and certifications in first aid of CPR, AED, and OSHA training. Those students have the ability to utilize those certifications and immediately apply them in the healthcare field, making up to twenty-one dollars an hour. All of those students have been accepted into the colleges and choices of their desire. Our Law and Public Safety CTE had five students graduate with nine-one-one dispatcher certification, first aid of CPR certification, self-defense, and an average of six college credits from Philly Dickinson University. They also have access to begin the application process to starting salaries of up to forty-three to forty-five thousand dollars as nine-one-one dispatchers. That is our Law and Public Safety CTE. Our engineering CTE, the following, well, seven students completed the four-year engineering program, and we have students going to Brookdale, as well as engaging in the family business, as well as NJIT. We've highlighted and celebrated a number of our students from our early dream college program that earned their associate's degree, but that was a small portion. Of our graduating class, we have students going to such universities as Seton Hall, Rider, Philly Dickinson, Monmouth, Spelman, Morgan State, Hampton, Howard, Tennessee State, NYIT, East Stroudsburg, and the Quinnipiac, Bloomfield, Rider, Montclair, Georgian Court, University of Bridgeport, Pace University, Bloomfield College, NJCU, East Stroudsburg University, Michigan State University, University of Arizona, Siena University, LaSalle, Clark Atlanta. And so these are just a few examples of the accomplishments of our students over this past year. And so I would be remiss if I, 'cause at graduation, we celebrated a number of our students that were recognized for the Dream Scholar, earning their associate's degree, but we have a number of our students who are leaving here and going off to further academic careers at the secondary school, as well as we had students going off to serve our country in the army. So that concludes this portion of my commentary.
Parents, before you leave, I just wanted to let you know you can see this presentation on AP TV. Thank you.
The Finance Committee met on June sixteenth, it was actually a joint meeting with the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Briefly, the first thing we discussed was the opportunity for stabilization aid, which in a sense is additional state aid. Administration expects the application to be released in August and awarded in September. First must get the final budget approved here at the end of June. The aid is, clearly, we can use dollars, but there are limitations on the aid. The aid is intended as a one-time grant of additional aid. That'll play into our decision-making in that next year, under the S two bill, we will be experiencing our biggest shortfall of state aid. But if we were to apply for stabilization aid, it could help us with recovering some of the monies lost in, in the budget we just completed for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. If we use the aid for capital projects, it can only support forty percent of that project. It could support one hundred percent of supplies and equipment. So the administration is following up with, with the county. We have a number of questions and information to, to receive from others involved in that process in making a determination about moving forward. Second thing, if you saw on your agenda, there are a number of items that are simply the annual resolutions to renew certain financial issues in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. We discussed architectural services, the elevator replacement at MLK and the three ESER bid proposals. We discussed ESER III funding had to be reduced from five point six million to two point five million in order to cover other areas in making the budget. A portion of the funds were removed from the media science room and auditorium upgrades, and we're reevaluating those projects, either scaling them back or perhaps finding additional funds in our capital reserve to help with those improvements. And then finally, a discussion of relocation of the central office, gonna be looking at the options of Thurgood Marshall, MLK Upper Elementary, first floor of Barack Obama, and have to make those decisions and put a plan in, in place in the early part year of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as we move forward. And that was, that concluded finance.
I just wanted to add one thing, I think unless something has changed, the stabilization aid can't, can't be used for salaries, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, Barbara.
The Athletic Committee met on June eighth. We discussed, as I'll go in detail, the banquet, which was held on June fifteenth. Two dates to mark down on your calendar, comes fall, September ninth, the first home game, they're going to honor the nineteen eighty-five undefeated football team, the ring ceremony, they already purchased their rings, it was supposed to happen in twenty twenty, but we know what happened in twenty twenty, so it's gonna happen this fall. And our homecoming, if you haven't marked it down already, is gonna be October seventh. The Athletic banquet again was held on the fifteenth, it was well-attended, it was a great night, and I wanna give a special shout out to Ms. Jackie DeMore, who organized everything from the food to the swag bags to the wonderful program that we have, and I think she did a lot of it with the, on a sheer string budget and staff. So props to Ms. Jackie DeMore. Thank you to all the coaches and the athletes to make this year, you know, a very, very wonderful year for everybody. And that concludes my final Athletic Committee report.
Joe?
I mean, a lot of it was, was covered by Dominic with the Finance Committee meeting, it was kind of a joint meeting. Why don't I just go through the bullet points, and if I, if I've missed anything, Jeff, you can kind of fill in the holes, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, great. By the way, thanks everybody for accommodating me attending virtually. It's great to see everybody from this different point of view at the table. So we, we had a Buildings and Grounds meeting on June sixteenth. We spoke about it, there was a facility use request by the Kazik Brothers Youth Football Elite. They put in an application for seventy-seven days of use for the football stadium and the field. They also include a request for a fee waiver, and the committee discussed adding them to priority to users, which requires a payment of a thousand dollars for the season. And the administration was going to reach out to Kazik Brothers to see if they're interested in this arrangement. I don't know, Jeff, if that's happened yet, or if they've responded. But the committee also discussed access to the fields for all groups and not allowing just any one group to monopolize usage. We also spoke about the second round of lead testing in water. The second round of testing have been completed, and there are positive results that will be included in a letter that'll be posted to our website, along with all the test results for each district location. Remedial action for positive tests includes things like posting appropriate signage on certain water fountains indicating hand washing only or turning off access. Some of the positive results are based on the two-year closure of, of water fountains due to COVID, and also, I think some of the positive results were in the Obama School, am I correct, Jeff?
Yes, the Obama School had a number, but we have that school closed for past two years.
Right.
And then the signage that you mentioned, so if you have a sink, a nurse's sink or something like that, it'll be noted as hand washing, and if it's a water fountain, we'll close the fountain then replace it.
Great, thank you. And then we also spoke similar to what Mr. Lata Raca was speaking about, where there was the reallocation of ESER III funds in the twenty twenty-three budget, and how a portion of the funds were moved from Phase Three Media Science Room Auditorium upgrades, and that we're gonna be reevaluating and scaling back these projects, and the funds may be allocated from Capital Reserve to help fund those improvements. So we also spoke about the Bradley Soccer Field. It's that soccer field, it's not a regulation field, it's kind of almost like, it, it almost is the size of an indoor soccer field, but it's not indoors, it's outdoors, right next to Bradley School. We were contacted by, the school district was contacted by the homeowners that have a house directly next to the soccer field, and they were interested in working with the district to beautify the field and also to provide benches for public use, so that way the kids that use the field don't have to sit, you know, on the grass, in some cases in the dirt and mud, and to have really nice benches, and the improvements obviously must be made in conjunction with the existing warranty. I actually kind of walked over to them this past weekend before the Juneteenth celebration, and just to kind of get an idea, a little bit more of a visual idea of what they were looking for. They had also mentioned that they would like to donate some trees to be placed along the city side of the, of the fencing there, in order to give the, the kids that use that field some shade, so they're not swelled. so they're not sweltering in the sun. So it's a really great offer, and they're going to be working with Jeff and the administration to make sure this is done correctly and properly.
Thank you, Joe.
And that's it. That's all I have on my end. That concludes my report.
Okay, the board's going to go into public participation. So in accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-and-answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the Board President. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
At this time, public participation is open.
Good evening. My name is Nina Sumlin. I reside at 1101 Bangs Avenue. I'm here to actually present to Dr. Adams. He couldn't make our Juneteenth Day event, but he was actually one of the fathers that was nominated to be recognized. So I'd like to be able to give him his plaque here at the board meeting. Is that okay with the board?
All right. Okay. Good evening. Whereas Rashawn M. Adams, Dr. Rashawn M. Adams, a highly esteemed resident of the Garden State, is being acknowledged for the immeasurable contributions he has made as a leader within the African-American community as the city Asbury Park commemorates Juneteenth. And whereas currently serving with distinction as the superintendent of the Asbury Park School District, Dr. Rashawn M. Adams, who earned his doctorate in education leadership from King University, is a dedicated professional who believes in the power of education and is as passionate about creating a culture of high expectations for young black boys and men and aspirations that has underpinned his work with the Fatherhood Initiative in his efforts to promote positivity and mental health, awareness in marginalized communities. Whereas prior to his superb tenure as superintendent, Dr. Rashawn M. Adams has shared his love of learning as an educator in the East Orange School District and as an effective and determined administrator in several school districts, including Newark, Irvington, Plainfield, and Trenton. And whereas by repeatedly demonstrating his devotion to the city, his citizens, and his fellow man, Dr. Rashawn M. Adams, has earned the respect and admiration of all who know him and has set a standard of excellence towards which others might strive. Now therefore, be it resolved by the state of the, excuse me, by the Senate of the State of New Jersey that this House hereby salutes Dr. Rashawn M. Adams, pays tribute to his meritorious, pardon me, thank you, record of service, leadership, and commitment and extends sincere best wishes for continued success in all his future endeavors. And be it further resolved that duly, and I don't have my glasses, so please forgive me, that a duly authenticated copy of this resolution, signed by the President and attested by the Secretary, be transmitted to Rashawn M. Adams.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you. I'm short on words, but thank you. I really appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'll close public comments. So we're going to make a motion, sorry, excuse me, to go in exact. So whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows for exclusion for discussion at the public portion of the meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wants to discuss such matters and meet and will make such decisions public when the proper exclusion has been reached. Now therefore, be it resolved that on June 23rd, 2022, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose of an outline described below, upon return, action may be taken. So litigation or contract matters, or alternate client privileges, or personnel matters. Motion, please. Good evening, everyone. Okay, in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the new poster on January 14, 2022 via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the administrative building, Building, Buildings and Grounds, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 14, 2022. The Asbury Park District will provide all students with a comprehensive progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Als, Ms. Breach. Mr. Grillow. Mr. Lotaroca. Mr. Remy. Ms. Ricks. Mr. Saunders. Ms. Lozinski. Ms. Cook.
Please rise with a flag salute.
Good evening, everyone. We're at this seven o'clock hour. We're going to do our Staff Members of the Month for the month of June. So we're going to start with Dr. Howard Morris, who will be doing the high school. While Dr. Howard Morris gets ready, I want to thank her for her support, leadership. She was the acting principal, director, this is her first one, for the high school until Ms. Baumgartner returned. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As I stated at my previous meetings, that the staff is, the staff is chosen by the students, and so that's what makes it more special, so, and more authentic. So our June Teacher of the Month goes to Ms. Katie N. Detbridge. So Ms. Detbridge is one of our top-notch science teachers. Not only has she given us our, one of our dream scholars, her daughter who graduated yesterday, but she's very firm and fair and is an excellent science teacher and one of our jewels at the high school. So thank you, Ms. Detbridge. And here you go on behalf of this administration.
Ms. Detbridge was everywhere. She was at the prom. She was, she was, you name her, she was there. Next up, we're going to have Mr. Perry Medina from MLK Upper Elementary.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge this teacher in two ways: character and as an educator. Ms. Tanya Peterson. Her character is truly remarkable. As I mentioned earlier with my student about being able to converse with people who truly leave you feeling good after the fact, Ms. Peterson is definitely one of those people. High energy, always asks how we're doing, and it's extremely genuine. In that regard, I'm truly grateful for her. As an educator, I can't, I don't know any more passionate person than Ms. Peterson. Her love for music, her knowledge of music truly translates to great instruction for our kids. Our kids truly love music because of you. So thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Third Good Marshall? Uh, she's not here, so I'm going to stand in for Third Good Marshall. Or would you like to come up, Ms. Jackson Byers, and assist me? Yeah, come and assist me. So, what can I say? I went to the school, and they were having a concert. And this individual was running around organizing one man band, one woman band, one person's show, doing it all. She has a love of tennis, but I think her love of music outweighs her love of tennis. Ms. Karen Schwartz is the Third Good Marshall Teacher of the Month. Now, here's your pen. However, because Dr. Schultz isn't here, we're going to give you, as one of the students sent last night at the graduation, virtual flowers for now, and then we will get you your gift on behalf of Ms. Schwartz. But nonetheless, I mean, Dr. Schwartz, but Schultz, 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 you're Ms. Schwartz, right? But truly, thank you. Your work with our students at Third Good Marshall is not gone unnoticed.
I want to thank Dr. Adams for coming to my concert. We always love to see administrators and board members there. And when I asked, who's ready to see 42 first graders play Duke Ellington on the xylophone? He said, "I am," and I was so happy to see you there. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. As I say, I like to save the hook for last, just in case, though, we're missing... So, Ms. Thea M. Jackson Byers.
So my Staff Member of the Month has no idea that she's being honored. When I tell you, when they say music soothes the soul of the savage beast, this person, she brings, what she brings to music, what she brings to the music program here at Bradley is a blessing. The students love coming to her class. Her concerts is an experience. It's not just a performance. Ms. Dalton, thank you for everything that you do. When I told the staff, everybody in the building was like, "Yes, yes, yes." Thank you, Ms. Dalton, for everything. Yes, I did do this. She's like, "I can't believe you did this." And I just told her, "I just need her," and she was here. That's it. She said, "I'm just here hanging with Ms. Jackson Byers." David said, "When are you here?" "Hanging with Ms. Jackson Byers." Thank you, Ms. Dalton. Don't kill me.
Now, it is total coincidence that we have three music teachers, so if we can have all three of them come up... No, and there was no communication between the schools on the selection, so it is... Yes. Yes, come on, move over, move over, move over, move over. Here we go. We're just going to coordinate this. Congratulations. That concludes my presentation.
Good evening. We have the HIV report for the month of May through June. We had seven allegations of hits, and we had which encompassed verbal, physical descriptions of the incidents. We had six that were founded and two that were not founded. The actions included parent notification and parent conference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now's the time of the meeting where the board is going to entertain public participation. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-and-answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the Board President. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the Board President and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up public comment.
Hi. As you know, I'm Ms. Karen Lee Schwartz, music teacher at Third Good Marshall. Just finished my 20th year in this district, 33 years as a teacher. I believe I have two more years to go. And I am here to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my love and knowledge of music with the students of Asbury Park and all your schools, as well as tennis, and to work with these fantastic music teachers that are just amazing. And thank you for our recognition tonight. And I also want to thank you for hearing what I said at the November meeting about art teachers and bringing back our art teacher program. Thank you.
Hello, I'm a little taller. Hello, Edley Victorin, Union County. I am the bilingual speech language pathologist at the high school. I'm here on behalf of the child study team and related service members. First and foremost, thank you for taking the time to be here and listen to some of our concerns. I first and foremost want to thank the board and administration for reconsidering the position of social work and psychology. Um, I, first and foremost, want to thank the board and administration for reconsidering the position of social work and psychologists. It's truly appreciated, especially since Cassandra is our only bilingual social worker. It really is, um, a, as a bilingual person myself, I know the importance of having, having that in this district, especially with our Haitian Creole population. Um, I am speaking, oh, actually, I forgot my phone. Sorry, my purse, sorry. Um, I have something on my phone that I wanted to share. But, um, I am here on, to speak on the position of speech, um, pathologist, or speech language specialist. And I am asking the board and administration to please reconsider the decision to, um, let her go. And I say that because I, as a speech therapist as well, have firsthand knowledge on the impact that it will have, not only on us, um, speech therapists, but on our students. Um, just a few facts, because of the pandemic, a lot of, um, early intervention services were halted. Um, a lot of our kids, as you know, are more delayed. Um, and referrals have not stopped, even up until the last week of school. This number will increase. It is, it will not go down. Just, um, two facts. Some of our local, um, centers that we, that service some of our children, one in particular, Children's Specialized Hospital, hospital, is no longer taking names for evaluations. Um, and they're on, because of the waitlist that they have, it's so long that right now they're not taking any more names. Um, the Child Evaluation Center in Jersey Shore Medical in Neptune, um, has a two-year waitlist for evals, and I believe they have stopped taking names. Um, these students will be coming to us, and currently in the district, we have a significant amount of students who are non-verbal. And a lot of these parents, um, kept them here in district because they trust us and they trust, um, some of the vision, the vision that we shared with them. Again, I don't want to go on, but, um, I do thank you for what you have done for our department so far. And I'm just asking you to please, please, please reconsider the position of speech language pathology. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'll close public comment.
Now, I just wanted to, um, address a couple of things. As it is very important, you know that we've been dealing with an extreme financial crisis. And we have been working with all of our buildings to right-size and do seat audits to make sure that where we can, um, look at, um, staffing. That is an ongoing, evolving, um, organism, uh, in of itself, because there are so many moving pieces and parts, um, that we look, and we have looked, and we're continuing to look and evaluate. Where we can bring individuals back, we still have rules and regulations and laws that we have to adhere to. Um, we take very seriously the services that, from speech pathology to special ed services, to janitor services, to the arts, um, in providing for our students. Um, and so it's not something that we're lost on. Um, it's something that has been acutely on our mind, and on my mind in particular as the superintendent, as we try to right-size our budget challenges with all of the other, um, obstacles that we are confronted with as a district. Um, and so some tough decisions have had to be made. And we will continue to do that in this budget crisis. But I would, um, implore you and those who are as passionate as you to have the same conversation at, um, the local municipality during City Hall and advocate on behalf of our fair funding share. Um, and, um, support the board and our students in that, in that realm and in that space, because it is critically important that we look at providing services for our students. Um, and we will continue to do that. But we need collective voices, not just the board members or myself, but we need, um, just as that passionate and advocate, advocating voice you have here this evening in those other spaces as well. Because the pot of money has many, um, areas that can support our community here. So I just wanted to address that. My superintendent report. Last evening, we had a high school graduation. And I want to first off start by thanking Ms. Herrera, who was the planner and organizer, um, at the graduation last evening. We had, um, thanks, um, Ms. Kathy Bongartney came back. But we also recognize the support and the leadership of Dr. Howard Morris during that time. Last evening, we, um, at the microphone, or rather, I, uh, recognized our students who graduated from Brookdale with their associate's degree. And we have a parent who, uh, child is a, a member of that. Um, and, um, also was a heavy participant on the, uh, program. But we would be remiss if we did not recognize our other graduates, um, from the class of 2022 that are in our allied health programs and our CTE programs. For example, we had seven students, um, who graduated yesterday with patient care, uh, technician certificates, um, and certifications in first aid, CPR, AED, and OSHA. These students are, have been accepted in, uh, to universities and colleges such as Georgian Court Nursing Program, where the bulk of them, and we have another student, um, Peter, who will be taking his talents to New Jersey City University. Some of these students in those certification programs, um, will be able to work at hospitals making up to at least $21 to $23 an hour as 18-year-olds with the proper certification that they've received here from Asbury Park. Our law and public safety program, um, CTE, had another five graduates who graduated with the 911 dispatching certification, first aid and CPR certification, self-defense, with an average of six college credits to Philly Dickinson University. But the other piece to that is, they also have access to begin the application process to start making between $43,000 and $45,000 a year as 911 dispatchers. This is another program that is exclusive to Asbury Park High School. And so some of those students have been accepted to Philly Dickinson University where their college trans, college credits will transfer. And some will be going to Keene as well as St. Peters University. Um, our engineering CTE program, we had another four students graduate from that program. And they will be, uh, going on to, um, work either in their family's business or Brookdale, uh, or NJIT. Again, these are students that were not a part of the Dream Academy program, right? So we make sure we celebrate those students who were part of the Dream program, but we have students doing other phenomenal things in our district that are not in that program. But we would be remiss if we talked, if we did not talk about our students that are graduating that are going off to four-year colleges and universities. So I want to list some of the acceptances to colleges and universities that some of our graduates have the options of Seton Hall, Rider, William Patterson, Montclair, Bloomfield, FDU, University of Hartford, Pace University, George Washington University, West Virginia, Roman, Georgian Court, NJCU, NJIT, Spelman, More, uh, Morehouse, Alabama State, um, University of Bridgeport, Michigan State, Keene, Clark Atlanta University, Hampton, Montclair, Stockton, um, Monmouth University. So University of Arizona, Siena University, Monmouth, okay, I did mention, University of, uh, New Haven. So we have students that are graduating from Asbury Park High School, which is a testament to our staff, which is a testament to our expectations, which is a testament to the direction that we're moving this district. And so those students and their success is a direct reflection of the staff, but also the commitment that this board has to those students and their families. And I would implore anyone watching this, that this is the place you want your child to be. This is the district you want your child to be a part of. This is a district that we are moving in the right direction with staff that care, with programs that offer opportunities, not only for those ready to be college and career-ready, but those who are looking to go to the secondary level. So if you are looking to come to a progressive district, this is the place where you need to be. So you need to think about enrolling your child without any hesitation, because we will be moving and this will be the place where you want your child enrolled. That's my report.
Thank you. Carol, do you have a report?
Thank you. I just like to, uh, report to the board in particular that, uh, Dr. Adams is working on a five-year plan. You're gonna get it, but, uh, I know Dominic is saying, "Oh my, oh my." It will address the financial and educational, uh, needs of the district for the next five years and how those needs will be addressed. And it will be extremely comprehensive. And the only reason I'm reporting it instead of him is because we just, uh, sat and discussed it in this, within this past week. And I said, uh, you know, it'd be nice occasionally if I did give a report. So, uh, I'm giving it to you. Uh, I can't give you a date as to when, uh, you can expect it, but I would assume it will be somewhere toward the beginning of the school year in September. Hopefully, um, we're going to involve a lot of other people in it. We have discussed this together and agreed that, you know, that we would like to hear from the county superintendent as well. And, uh, perhaps members of local government. But we certainly will be discussing it in detail with the board as we move on step by step. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. So at this time, we'll make a motion to go in exec. Whereas the open. Okay, we're gonna get to the agenda first, so you guys don't have to sit around waiting for us.
Do I have a motion for items 10 and 11 on page A2?
I'll move it.
It's moved by Ms. Lozinski, second by Ms. Cook. Any questions or comments? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Cook? Ms. Breach?
Abstain on 10, yes to 11.
Mr. Grillow?
Yes.
Mr. LaRaca? Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Abstain on anything that have to do with the wars and yes on everything else.
Thank you.
Madam President, award, um, I would like a consent, uh, agreement on all items, um, on B1 through Addenda B10.
I'll check.
Any questions or comments? This is all items B1 through B10. Thank you, Ms. Cook. Uh, this is all items B1 through B10. Ms. Cook? Ms. Lozinski? Ms. Breach?
Yes, on everything. Abstain on page B3, item 5, letters K and L.
Mr. Grillow?
Yes.
Mr. LaRaca? Mr. Remy?
Yes, abstain on all items. B4, number 10. Yes on everything else.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks? Thank you. All items carry.
Madam President, I would like to introduce our newly appointed principal, Ms. Bridget O'Neil, who is in the audience this evening. Ms. O'Neil?
Thank you, Dr. Adams, Dr. Gibson. Thank you for the whole interview process. I'm incredibly excited to be joining the Asbury Park School District. I am a local to Monmouth County, and it certainly feels like coming home. I am extremely excited to partner with the children and families, um, that make up this district, as well as the staff, and identify where we are strong and where there's continued opportunities to grow. I will bring that to you. You have my tireless commitment to dedicate myself and my efforts to every single child that comes to Asbury Park High School and work closely with the central office team to make that vision happen. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to the team.
Do I have a motion for all items C1, number 1 to C16, number 3?
I'll move it.
Any questions or comments?
The only question I had is, uh, three points. Did they rent, did they use, um, classrooms last year too, also? I don't, I don't remember. Because we didn't have this in the V and G, uh, meeting.
Right, I believe three points just used the soccer field.
Is, so other janitors gonna be on duty? Is that why there's no janitorial fees?
Yes, when there's no fees, it indicates staff is on duty.
Okay, thank you.
What number was that?
It's, uh, what number is that, Jeff?
That's, uh, C4, number 7. Would also note tonight, we're awarding, uh, a bid for the replacement of the upper elementary school elevator. Any other questions or comments? This is all items, uh, C1, number 1 to C16, number 3. Ms. Cook? Ms. Lozinski? Ms. Breach? Mr. Grillow?
Yes, on everything, uh, but abstain on C1A.
Thank you. Mr. LaRaca? Yeah, I guess, pet paid C4, item 6C. Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. All items carry.
Now I want to make the motion to go in exec. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows for exclusion for discussion at the public portion of the meeting in certain matters outlined below. Whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education was to discuss such matters made and will make such discussions public when a proper conclusion has been reached. Now therefore be the resolve that the June, I'm sorry, be that it resolved that the June 23, 2002, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose of outline and described below, upon return, an action may be taken. Um, litigation, contract matters, or alternate client privileges, or personnel matters. Motion, please. Motion, please.
I'll move it. Second.
Ladies and gentlemen who are here this evening, the board's gonna retire to executive session, and it's anticipated that the board will be in executive session for approximately 45 minutes to an hour, after which time they will be returning to this public session to take a vote, and then the meeting will likely be adjourned. Thank you. Ms. Als? Ms. Breach? Mr. Grillow?
Yes.
Mr. LaRaca? Mr. Remy? Ms. Ricks? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski? Ms. Cook? The iMarketer.
Can I have a motion to deny the grievances presented from the APEA as discussed on the executive session, letters A through H?
Okay, we have a motion to deny grievances, letters A through H. Ms. Cook? Ms. Ricks? Microphone, please, Ms. Ricks. Thank you.
Abstaining on F and G and yes for everything else.
Ms. Breach? Mr. Grillow?
I'm assuming I would have to abstain from this, correct?
Thank you. Mr. LaRaca? Mr. Remy? And Ms. Lozinski? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the summary evaluation for Dr. Adams. Give me a second.
Secondhand motion?
Okay, this is to accept the summary evaluation presented to the CSA Dr. Adams. Ms. Cook? Mr. Remy? Ms. Breach? Mr. Grillow?
Yes.
Mr. LaRaca? Ms. Ricks? And Ms. Lozinski? Motion passes. All in favor?